I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. This evening, Board Member Peter Dombrowski will be participating via telephone conference. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. We'd like to remind everybody that we value our procedures and decorum at our meeting and be respectful to all, and as a reminder, our meetings are video recorded. At this time, we will have recognitions. Dr. Cates, would you like to introduce?
I'd echo Mrs. Burke's comments. Certainly welcome to everyone here this evening. We have some outstanding students and parents to recognize for some remarkable accomplishments. We'll start our evening this night with recognition of our National Merit semifinalists, and at this time, I'd like to ask Mrs. Burke to join Mr. Kovak, our Associate Superintendent, at the podium to recognize our National Merit semifinalists.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. If I could have our National Merit Scholars kind of move ahead of our ACT recognizes that might be helpful. Thank you. Board of Education, Dr. Cates, administrators, and parents, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce students from the class of 2018 who have distinguished themselves as National Merit Scholars. The National Merit Scholarship Program began in 1955 with a mission to ensure that the very brightest students are provided the opportunity to pursue higher education and enable those students to serve our nation. The National Merit Scholarship Competition for these students began in October of their junior year when they completed the Preliminary Scholastic Aptitude Test, commonly called the PSAT, along with one and a half million other high school students. And based on their performance on that assessment, they, along with 16,000 other individuals from the nation, received recognition from the College Board as semifinalists in the scholarship competition. Tonight, we have 31 students from District 211 in that group. They rank among the top 1% of students across the country. Tonight, each of these students will be presented with District 211's Robert Creek Excellence Award. The award is named in honor of Robert Creek, who served with District 211 as a board member for 20 years, 19 of those as board president. Tonight, Mrs. Burke will join me, and she will present the award to each student as I call their names. As you can imagine, these students are all highly involved in our schools and in our communities, and so although some of the students who earned this honor are not able to be with us this evening, the overwhelming majority of them are. I would ask that, as I call your name, if you could please come across the room to the podium to receive your award, and if those in the audience could, please hold your applause until the -- all the names have been called, so that we don't lose the opportunity to hear the names of any of our recognizes. First is Abhanav Agarwal from Conan High School, along with his parents Sanjeev and Parents, if you would like to stand as I call your students' name, we would like to honor you as well. Abhanav Balu, with Mr. and Mrs. Balu. Lisa Bonatz, with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Bonatz. Adithi Achary, with her parents Sudeshan and Shuba. Varun Sadambi, with his parents Ramnath and Anurdhartha. Gil Bismann, with Mr. and Mrs. Bismann. Kaylee Henson, with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Henson. Stephanie Hu, Mr. and Mrs. Hu. Jessie Wang, with her parents. Kashif Javed, with his father Abdul and mother Sayeda. Anika Laffiatis, with her parents David and Jessica. Edward Lee, his parents Harry and Juan. Anna Miller, with Mr. and Mrs. Miller. Yohei Namiki, his mother Mrs. Namiki. Adith Pala, with Mr. and Mrs. Pala. Nicholas Parek, with his parents Manish and Mahiu. Elizabeth Perez, with her parents Mr. and Mrs. Perez. Miga Romanathan, with her parents Mr. and Mrs. Romanathan. Shashank Sandhu, with his parents Mr. and Mrs. Sandhu. Bianca Saputra, with her parents Adrian and Julisari. Lauren Streetmider, with her parents Michael and Karen. Nitin Subramanian, with his parents Subramanian and Nirmala. Edwin Suresh, with his parents Suresh and Ruby. Bagrav Yadavali, his parents Mr. and Mrs. Yadavali. Sarah Yamaguchi, with Mr. and Mrs. Yamaguchi. And Allison Zheng, her parents Heng and Jenit. I congratulate each of these students and their families on this outstanding accomplishment, and we look forward to learning more about the exciting opportunities that they take advantage of in the coming years.
Each student who prepares for college is familiar with the emphasis placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the Americas College -- American College Test, or the ACT as it is commonly known. The highest composite score a student can earn on the ACT is a score of 36. Statistically, less than one-tenth of 1% of students who take the ACT achieve this highest score. Tonight, we recognize seven students in District 211 who have achieved this remarkable accomplishment. Since we began tracking students who have achieved the highest possible score on the ACT 20 years ago, with the addition of our students tonight, we have now crossed the 100 mark for a 20-year total of 104 students. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I'd like to congratulate each of them. We can have certificates that the Board President, Mrs. Burke, will distribute to you in just a moment. Each student will be introduced to us by a sponsor selected by the student. Our first sponsor will be Conan High School mathematics teacher Amar Patel. He will be followed by, in this order, from Fremd High School, science teacher Frank Osnikar, counselor Ashley Curtin, mathematics teacher Jerry Moon, English teacher Becky Shomar, science teacher Carl Kratic, and English teacher Kristy O'Donnell.
Thank you. My name is Amar Patel. I'm a math teacher at Conan High School. It is my pleasure to present to you Rajah Matal. His dad, Bharat, is here. You can stand up, sir. Thank you. So it is my, you know, all of our pleasures to have students like this. Rajah is our best mathlete on the math team, and it's a joy coaching him. He's also a star on the Conan basketball team, which is a mathlete and an athlete, which a lot of our kids are. But what really I feel set him apart, and I'm honored to be here for him, is his passion for math. He's gotten together with some other local math aficionados and created a nonprofit organization to help youth in the area to really work on high-level math before they even get to high school, and I think that's an amazing accomplishment. And I was just telling Rajah, he reminds me of one of my partner -- I was in math team in high school. My partner was -- also had a perfect on his ACT, and he just was part of the Nobel Physics Prize. So for all of you, you know, we expect the same, I think. So Rajah Matal, thank you.
Hello. My name is Frank Osnikar. I'm a science teacher at Fremd High School, and this is Gotham Aron. Gotham is a fantastic student, of course, very high academic ability, and as the weeks rolled on in my AP Physics class, he kept asking better and better questions. He wrote some really good lab reports, too, which shows his ability to communicate well, both written and in oral form. And second semester, he really demonstrated a lot of grit and determination to kind of turn around his grade just a little bit, and scored an A, you know, for second semester. He was doing really well, and it just shows that he just has the grit, the tenacity required to stick with it sometimes and really do the best. So it's an honor for me to come up here and introduce Gotham Aron. I'd like also to introduce his families here tonight, Mr. and Mrs. Aron. Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate your support. And thank you, everybody.
My name's Ashley Curtin. I'm a guidance counselor at Fremd High School, and this is Hannah Chen. She's here tonight with her parents, Mr. and Mrs. Chen. I have had the privilege of working with Hannah as her guidance counselor for the past three years. From my experiences working with her, it is evident that Hannah is a standout student. Every year, she chooses to take the most challenging classes available, and she excels in all of them. She has maintained straight A's in all of her classes and has a weighted GPA of 5.11. Not only is Hannah a strong student, but she also is extremely involved in Fremd's extracurricular activities. She plays the clarinet in her band class and participates on Fremd's badminton team, math team, executive board, speech team, and National Honor Society. During Hannah's rare moments of free time, she finds herself volunteering at Chinese school, where she is an assistant teacher. She also traveled to Haiti the last two summers as a volunteer, building orphanages and distributing food. As you can see, Hannah is not only an amazing student, but she is an amazing human being. When she shared with me that she earned a perfect score on the ACT, I was not surprised. I am very proud of her and honored to be able to introduce her here tonight at the board meeting, Hannah Chen.
Hi, I'm Jerry Moon, math teacher from Fremd High School. It's an honor and a pleasure for me to introduce Christina Chen to everyone here tonight for a perfect ACT score. I would like to start by asking Christina's parents, Mr. Hao Chen and Ms. Bing Ren, to stand and be recognized. I've had the great pleasure of having Christina in my math class for two years. First in algebra II when she was just an eighth grader, and then again last year when she was in my AP Calc BC class. And this year, I'm thrilled to be working with her as her coach on the math team. And through all these experiences, I've gotten to know her really well, and, you know, in addition to being brilliant, which she certainly is, she's also personable, humble, fun-loving, hard-working, patient, and helpful. When she was in my math classes, both last year and when she was in eighth grade, she was getting hundreds on everything, you know, doing absolutely phenomenal, but she continued to work way harder than everyone else in the class, going above and beyond, asking for extra problems, just putting in, you know, extra preparation. And to be honest, I was a little bit puzzled. Most students in that position, you know, might be relaxing a little bit, knowing that they have 100% average, but this describes Christina perfectly for those who don't know her. She always works hard. She always gives 100%, and she always goes above and beyond, whether anyone's watching, whether it's going to be on the test, she always gives her best. And it's with this quality, she has helped carry our teams to victory, she selflessly helped her peers succeed, and she has helped make me a better teacher and a better coach. Christina, you have such an exciting future ahead of you. This is just one of many successes along the way as you journey through life. Keep giving 100%, keep achieving great things. Congratulations.
Good evening. My name is Becky Shomar, and just as everyone else has already said, it's an honor and a privilege to introduce this young man to all of you, Jonathan Lee, and his father, Mr. Lee, are here. Mrs. Lee is at home, so we're going to say hi to her. I actually have a couple of stories about Jonathan that I think will illustrate what a tenacious learner and a good human being he is. Empathy is the quality that jumps out the most. I think the intelligence goes without say, since he earned a 36 on his ACT. Routinely, having him two years in a row, I witnessed this young man comfort other people when they struggled, help them when they didn't understand something, and I think the highlight of our two years together, Jonathan, was when we were doing speeches sophomore year. This is what happened. Jonathan Lee never misses school. If he does, it's a very valid reason. We were in the middle of a speech unit. It was Jonathan's day to present his speech, and I looked over at an empty seat. Puzzled, I asked the other kids, "Does anyone know where Jonathan is?" Nobody knew. This was first period, Fremd High School. All of a sudden, 20 minutes into the period, my classroom door swings open loudly. This young man comes in out of breath, apologetic that he interrupted class and that he was late. It turned out he had missed the bus and did not want to miss that speech opportunity. He ran to school so that he could perform his speech for my class. Now, one of the high points after this was a little girl in the front row raised her hand and said, "Mrs. Shomar, we don't live close. Jonathan's my neighbor, and we live off Palatine Road by the jewel." So with that, the class and I decided to take him to the cafeteria and reward him with breakfast, and we heard his speech the next day. This is the young man that stands before you. He's going to do amazing things in this world. Thank you, Jonathan, for touching my life.
Where are you going, Ed? Get over here. Everyone wants to see you, not me. I'm very pleased and honored to present Edward Lee to you for achieving the highest possible score on the ACT. At this time, I'd also like to introduce and recognize his mother and father, Yuan and Harry Lee, who are here. You have obviously done an outstanding job in raising Ed, and I'm glad you could be recognized as well. I had Ed in my senior-level AP Chemistry class while he was a sophomore, and so as a sophomore in AP Chem, Ed did not just even survive that class, he was a science rock star, which is totally a thing. And so you might be wondering what it takes to be a science rock star. Well, look at Ed Lee. Here are some of the criteria that set him apart. Last year, as a junior, Ed earned the High Honors on the United States Chemistry Olympiad. These are people who choose to take chemistry tests for fun. Ed, in the High Honors, was the top 50 students nationwide out of the 16,000 people who chose to take these tests. After junior year, Ed ran out of AP Science classes, so he is now the Student Education Intern for the AP Physics C, which is the calculus-based class. So not only did Ed rocket, now he's teaching other people as well. And then also, in his spare time, he did some independent research at a university this summer, which has culminated with him just recently being named this week as a semifinalist in the prestigious Siemens Competition in Math, Science, and Technology. Most importantly is all, Ed is a science rock star because he is humble about his numerous talents. You ask him, you say, "Ed, good job." He's like, "Thank you. Thanks." And he has looked up to his peers for his scientific knowledge and the occasional answer from time to time, and fry his teachers for checking their answer keys. So it's obvious to me how Ed has earned this accomplishment, and I'm honored to have had him as a student. Congratulations, Ed, and his family.
Hi, my name is Kristy O'Donnell. I'm an English teacher at Fremd, and I'd like to present Adith Pala and his parents, Mr. and Mrs. Pala. It is my honor to introduce Adith, as we recognize him for the outstanding achievement of scoring a composite score of 36 on his ACT. I'm not surprised to be up here presenting Adith for this award, considering his exemplary performance in AP English Language and Composition his junior year. Besides the fact that he would achieve nearly perfect scores on incredibly complex AP Reading Multiple Choice Tests, his ability to write, in my opinion, may be one of his greatest gifts. I'm sure everyone is well aware of the fact that English teachers are constantly grading papers. That is why, when a student like Adith comes along, I thank the infinite campus gods that landed him in my class. When I read Adith's writing, the level of sophistication and eloquence present make me feel like I'm given into a sneak peek into one of the minds of the most gifted thinkers I have taught in my career. And I have also got to see him in some practice debate rounds, which have been fun. After working with Adith on his college essays this year, I realized that his talent is not only limited to analytical and argumentative writing, he can produce creative, powerful creative writing as well. And this is not only, this is not even to say like what he can do in math and science, because I think you've, like, you've probably maxed out the classes you can take at Fremd, so that's awesome. His tenacious attitude means he never settles for anything less than he is capable of, and I feel fortunate to have had him as a student. He made my life easier by always participating and always turning in exceptional work. I am honored to present him for this rare and remarkable achievement, just one among many more I'm sure he'll achieve in his lifetime. Please join me in congratulating Adith Pala. Thank you.
Energy Star is a United States Environmental Protection Agency volunteer program that helps businesses and individuals save money and protect our climate through energy efficiency. Each year, the EPA and the Department of Energy jointly honor organizations that have made outstanding contributions to protecting the environment. I'm proud to announce that all five District 211 high schools have each earned Energy Star Building Certification for 2017. Our five high schools represent five of only 14 schools in the state that have achieved 2017 Energy Star Building Status. Nationally, there are even fewer recognized with less than one-half of 1% of schools achieving this energy conservation status. These awards serve as acknowledgement of our staff's commitment and dedication to continuous improvement in energy efficiency, to help translate the impact of these energy efficiencies. This is the 13th year of the district's monitored energy conservation efforts, and during this time, the district, we estimate, has saved approximately $16 million in energy costs. This is money that we can then direct back toward our classrooms and benefiting students. So we are very appreciative of everyone's effort throughout the district. Each of our schools will receive an Energy Star plaque, the one I'll hold up in just a moment. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to ask representatives from each of our high schools to stand, along with our Director of Facilities and Business Services, Chris Cottney, and our Facilities Engineer, Nick Jenke. Please stand at this time. We are not dragging you up here this year.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we'd like to congratulate all the students and adults here this evening on work well done within our schools. We will take a five-minute to seven-minute, probably more like seven minutes recess to get any types of photographs for families and for the schools. Once again, congratulations. All right, that was very nice. We will begin our business portion of the meeting with citizens and parents and presentations. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign on the yellow sheet if they'd like to address the Board of Education? Okay, seeing none, we have Mr. John Parker as the first person we'd like to speak. As a reminder, please let me your comments in five minutes if you'd like a response from the superintendent to leave that with Mr. Kovak. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Parker, and I would like a response. I would really like one from the school board, but the superintendent has always done a good job at answering questions. So my first question is, does the District 211 Board of Education plan to lead negotiations or be in the negotiating room for the upcoming teacher's contract? Similar to the courageous District 15 Board of Education in Palatine, will this board keep the community informed the way District 15 has kept the community informed in Palatine? I think people would really appreciate that. My second question. What is District 211's funding level of adequacy relative to the 110% as set in law recently signed by Governor Rauner? Should I repeat that, or Mr. Cates, you have that?
Yeah, I have it, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay. There's no one else addressing the Board of Education. We'll move on to our presentation. Dr. Cates?
Each year, we present you with information over a span of weeks and months leading up to the levy determination in December. So tonight, we have a presentation that follows a earlier presentation this month about the initial indications about the levy decisional factors, and we're going to present it tonight from two people you are familiar with, Lauren Hummel and Barb Peterson, again tonight. So I'll hand it over to the, to our two presenters.
All right. Well, we are getting warmed up here, but we have presented information over the past, starting beginning in September this year regarding the 2017 levy, and certainly would like to just begin by emphasizing the importance of the levy on the district's financial position as well as its ability to sustain the level of programs that it is for our students today. So tonight, we will continue with additional information surrounding the 2017 levy. So tonight, we will continue with additional information surrounding the 2017 levy. District 211's levy provides over 85% of our total revenue. Therefore, as the largest source of revenue, certainly has a very critical role in our ability to fund our various programs. Any change in that levy amount has an impact on our district financially as well. So tonight, we will continue to talk about our recommendation for the 2017 levy. The district is subject to the Property Tax Extension Limitation Law. This is commonly referred to as the tax cap. And what the tax cap is, is it is a limitation that is placed on all taxing bodies within Cook County and other counties throughout the state of Illinois that limits the amount by which they may increase their levy year over year. The limitation is determined by the Consumer Price Index, or which is a cost of living adjustment factor, plus the addition of any new property growth or new construction development within a given community. So for the current year, that Consumer Price Index amount is 2.1%. What the tax cap also does is it allows us, or let me back up a second, what it is limiting is the aggregate of our operating fund levies. So that combined amount of each individual fund may not exceed that tax cap limit. What it does not cap is the individual property tax owner's tax bill.
There are many things to consider in setting our 2017 levy. As Lauren mentioned, the biggest factor is the PTAL limitation, and this year, we are looking at a 2.4% maximum increase under PTAL. That represents the CPIU of 2016 of 2.1%, plus some minimal new property growth, which is averaging about 0.3% a year. We will be debt-free here shortly, in about another month, as we make our final debt payment on our outstanding life safety bonds, and we will therefore have no need to have a debt service levy. So there will be no debt service levy this year. We'll strictly have an operating levy, which we are referring to also as the aggregate levy. 2017 levy will impact next school year's budget, so we will see this for the 2018-19 school year budget. That is because Cook County will not have tax rates finalized until probably May of this next year. Our levy is going to need to provide us sufficient revenue to support not only our annual instructional programming, but also our operating needs of all of our buildings, and fund our life safety projects, as well as our facility improvement projects. This is new for us. In the past, we've always funded our life safety projects through the issuance of bonds, and through our strategic plan, we are looking at funding our life safety projects moving forward through our operating levies or out of our reserves. And finally, let's keep in mind that last year, we had an unprecedented amount of property tax refunds, and no matter what the amount that we levy, we will not collect 100% of that. This is our recommended aggregate levy for 2017. As you can see in the red circle, we are recommending a levy increase of the maximum under the PTAL limitation of 2.4%. What I'd like to talk about now is how we are dividing that up between the funds. As you can see, we're recommending nominal increases in our education and operational maintenance funds of 0.7% and 1.1% while under the CPI index of 2.1. We are recommending about a million-dollar increase in our levy for transportation, and as Lauren will shortly discuss, that is to replace many of our aging school bus fleet. Our recommendation in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund and Social Security is right at 2.4%. That will not only fund our operations in that fund for next year, it will allow us to make a $2 million advance payment on our unfunded pension liability to pay down that obligation. And finally, we are recommending a $2.5 million levy into working cash. As I mentioned earlier, we will be self-funding all of our life safety projects moving forward, and this sets that money aside for our next round of life safety. This summer, we'll complete our 2010 life safety projects with a wrap-up at Fremont High School. We are already underway on our next life safety study. We hope to have that completed and approved by the state by next fall, and this would give us funds available by then to start on that next round of projects.
As Barb just shared, we are recommending an increase in our transportation fund levy, specifically for the purpose of replacing school buses. Our current fleet contains about 160 buses, and we have a targeted lifespan of 10 to 12 years for those buses to be in our use. We have been able to maintain our fleet in very good working condition through the mechanics that we have on staff, as well as our preventative maintenance and schedules and repairs, and have really been able to keep those buses through that targeted life age. About 10 years ago, we began slowing down the purchase of our buses because we did have these practices in place, and now we are at a point where we have, our buses are starting to fall below that life, and we feel that it is important for us to be able to replace those buses. We have about 25% of our fleet that has fallen below the targeted life, and you have some information in your materials tonight as well about those buses, as well as some of the alternative fuel sources that we are considering. Over the past three years, we've started to gradually increase those purchases, but this one-year purchase would allow us to get caught up on that and then be able to replace them on our normal replacement cycle, keeping with the 10 to 12-aged lifecycle. The information on this slide is, should look very familiar. We have presented several of these, well, all of these life safety and facility improvement projects over the past several years. They are projects that are specifically outlined in our strategic plan, and they are projects, many of them have now been accomplished, but we continue to move forward and plan for the projects for next summer. You can see here in the yellow box that these are the projects that we are planning for that will primarily take place in the summer of 2018. Those projects include replacement of our chiller equipment, which is, was identified in our life safety study. That work will take place at Fremont High School. We will continue with restroom renovations throughout the district. We are, we have been talking for a few years about the upcoming need to be able to replace the stadium carpet and tracks. They are, again, have been well-maintained and are at their life expectancy, and now we are recommending that we would start with two of those next summer for replacement. We also have a great deal of work taking place at Fremont High School right now on our outdoor fields. That includes drainage, resurfacing, just really improving the infrastructure so that we have greater usability of those fields throughout the year. We are looking at doing the same type of work at Connet, where we have similar challenges over there as well. So those are the projects that are being planned for this coming summer. These projects are paid for out of our, primarily out of our Capital Projects Fund and our Life Safety Fund. Those, again, are planned without debt. The funding source for those projects is through our either current operating budget or current or future reserves that are being planned. So the levy is a critical component in us being able to fulfill our obligation to remain debt-free and continue to play for those, pay for those projects. So when we talk about the levy, we look at what is the impact that our recommendation would have on the average homeowner. So here, you have information surrounding the three largest communities that we are serving, with Hoffman Estates, Palatine, and Schaumburg, and you can see there that the median home value for each of those communities is also provided. The impact of the District 211's recommended levy increase of 2.4% has a, would have an impact of anywhere from $43 to $51 on that median homeowner in those communities. What is not reflected in those values is additional exemptions that were just approved by Cook County that will take effect next year as well. Those would further reduce that amount for property owners as well. Those amounts were increasing by $3,000 and up to $6,000 for senior citizen exemptions. Barb mentioned a little bit about our unprecedented level of property tax refunds that we received last year. You can see that demonstrated here, that we surpassed $9 million, which was by far our highest year of losses. Over the past three years, you can see what we have levied as an increase year over year, dollar-wise, and then compare that to the total property tax losses that we had during the same time period. So certainly, while we are levying every year, we are aware that we are not receiving that entire amount and have much surpassed our average losses in the prior year. Unfortunately, this year, we are also at a point where we are trending similar to last year as well, so we will continue to monitor that and update you on those losses throughout the year.
Whenever we make a levy recommendation, we always update our five-year projection model at the same point in time to see how that recommendation will impact us moving forward. And this five-year plan should look pretty similar to what we presented to you at the time of the budget. It is not, nothing has changed too significantly. I will draw your attention to our fund balance percentages at the end of five years, and fund balance percentage represents what percentage of reserves do you have in relation to next year's expenditures? So on the operating fund balance side, we dropped to 38%, and on the educational fund, down to 34%, and our targeted minimum by policy is 33%. Also, I'd like you to notice that while we're transferring out about $10, $12 million a year in the out years here, to IMRF and 10 to capital projects and life safety projects, so about $12 million a year we're spending, and our operating surplus is almost $10 million a year. So it is critical for us to maintain these budget surpluses because we're transferring it right back out the same year and using it for our capital projects. So that is truly how we are self-funding, is through our current operating surpluses. I wanted to give you a couple what-if scenarios. We've given you our recommendation, but what if? So as a baseline, I'll remind you of what we did recommend of a 2.4% increase, and that our fund balance percentages at the end of five years are represented here. What if we only levied 1.2% or half of that recommended level? What would our numbers look like then? We would have a decrease in our revenues over five years of $12.5 million, and our fund balance percentages would drop to 33% and 32%, so right at our minimums per policy. So if we were to go with a scenario like this, we would be looking at making some changes in our strategic plan or else issuing debt to pay for our capital projects moving forward. The next scenario is as much as what would have happened as it is a what-if, but in the last two years, we have reduced our total overall levy by about $5 million through debt service abatement. What if we would have instead abated our operating levy by $5 million instead of our debt service levy? What would have happened? Well, over that five, the next five years, we would have a reduction in our revenues of about $27 million. Now granted, our levies for the last two years would have been the same, but moving forward, we'd see $27 million in losses, and that is because the operating levy compounds, and we would not be able to access those funds going forward. And as you can see, our operating fund balance and our educational fund balance would have dropped below our minimum per policy. So any reduction from 2.4% is going to result in substantial losses that compound over The Board has significantly reduced the levies throughout the district over the last 10 years through its debt abatement strategy, and specifically, you've reduced it $33 million to taxpayers over the last 10 years. That is significant. If we look at the average increase over the last three years, you can see that even with this year's levy increase proposed at 2.4%, we're averaging just 1% increase over the last three years to our taxpayers, and that is all due to the debt abatement strategy.
So we talk about, we've demonstrated a little bit about what District 211, what the levy would have, what the impact would be on the property tax owner, or the property owner, and that is determined by one factor that is used in calculating the overall tax bill. District 211, there are, there are five components that are used in determining that tax bill calculation. District 211 determines or has control over one of those, being the tax rate. The tax rate is the amount that is levied, and it is, it is determined by the amount of local property wealth as well. The other components here, the property value, is determined by the county assessor. The property assessment level has been established by the county assessor as well and has been in place for a number of years. There is an equalization factor that is released every year, and what this does is it is, it is used to bring properties in Cook County in alignment with all other properties throughout the state of Illinois. So that factor changes on an annual basis, depending on what those property values are. And then, as I mentioned earlier today, there are exemptions which play into the total property tax bill amount as well. So this is a sample of 50 residential properties in District 211 boundaries. What you are looking at here is what their change was in their tax bill amount over one year, from 2015 to 2016. So you can see there's a great deal of variation in those property tax bill changes. What I'd like to illustrate is that this is what District 211 levied. During that same time period, we levied an increase of 0.5%. So when we look at, why does the property tax bill not increase at the same rate as what the districts are levied or what taxing bodies are limited to under the tax cap? There are multiple areas for that. And again, going back to what I just shared, there were two main things that took place last year. One was that 2016 was a reassessment year. Cook County is in a triennial reassessment period. The North Triad was assessed last year, and people may have received notice that their property value changed. That has direct impact on their tax bill calculation. The other factor that I mentioned was the equalization factor, and last year, that rate increased. If all other components stayed the same and just the equalization factor increased, that would have a direct, that would have an increase on an individual tax bill without any change in any of those other four components on an individual tax bill. So when we talk about how it's difficult to predict someone's individual tax bill, these are the reasons why, because they are not all in control. Only one of them is in the district's control, and the others are outside factors, which certainly vary from property owner to property owner.
At June 30th of this year, we had fund balance reserves in our operating funds of approximately 54%. And as I've mentioned, by policy, we target a minimum of 33%, which translates to about $80 million that we are required to keep on hand. And I wanted to just demonstrate what are our plans for the rest of that fund balance. Well, we have $23 million in capital projects that were approved in this past budget. We have transferred the majority of that out to the Capital Projects Fund and have already spent most of that money on projects that have taken place over the summer. We have another $3.6 million that is invested in what we call non-spendable assets, so that is property that the school district owns mostly for our building trades programs that we, right now, are holding for future use. The budget also approved a $2 million transfer to IMRF, and, I'm sorry, not a transfer, but a payment out of IMRF reserves that will reduce our current pension obligation to IMRF this year. We have transferred half a million dollars to our life safety fund to wrap up our work this coming up summer at Fremont High School. We are transferring $2.7 million out of working cash to debt service to abate our f-. We are transferring $2.7 million out of working cash to debt service to abate our final payment on our life safety bonds that will take place next month. We have already made a $400,000 lease payment on our Apple iPad leases, and that brings us to about $19 million that is available, undesignated fund balance. And that would cover things such as new mandates, new laws, such as possibility of property tax freezes or pension shift, and it would also cover any new strategic initiatives that we would potentially have to. This is the levy tax, tax levy calendar for your review. After tonight, moving forward, we do have a tentative date of November 1st for an additional Budget and Finance Committee meeting on the levy, should we want to discuss this further. At the November 9th Board of Education meeting, the board will need to set a levy amount. We will then post for a public hearing and have a public hearing at our December board meeting, at which time the board will need to adopt a levy. It is required that we file a levy by the last Tuesday in December, which this year will be the 26th of the month. I just want to leave you tonight with a few summary items and highlights. Again, we are proposing a 2.4% levy increase, which we are allowed under PTAL, and this will bring our three-year average increase to 1%. We will not have a debt service levy for this year. We will be debt-free next month. We will be self-funding in our life safety and our capital projects, and these projects will be funded through our operating budgets and our reserves. The levy will provide for us to fund all of our strategic initiatives for our strategic plan, for the duration of the plan. We will get down to about 38% in fund balance at the end of five years, and this is planned use of our reserves. We will be making an additional $2 million payments of our IMRF obligation, and this levy will continue to allow us to pay down that obligation $2 million per year for the next five years, so that will help us to do that. Just because we have a levy increase doesn't mean that we're going to stop looking for efficiencies. And over the last three years, we have implemented $3.8 million of reductions, and we are committed to continue to look for those, those reductions no matter what our levy is. And finally, as a reminder, this levy will impact the taxpayers in Districts 211 boundaries by approximately $50 per residential household. That was a lot of information in a short period of time. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone want to ask any questions or comments? It was a lot of information, and I did not attend the Budget and Finance meeting, so it's a twice-review for some. The rest of us have had it the whole time, so it's a lot, so thank you. Anyone?
I do have a question, if I may. I know in the past, you've kind of given us a couple of different levy percentages, and I'm wondering if maybe for our next meeting, had you taken a look at doing the levy at maybe 2% or 1.75%? And I'm wondering if we make those kind of changes, how does that affect the money that we have unassigned that was on the page here that said current and future reserve allocations? I know you don't have the answers right now, but I'm just wondering how that might affect us. And then I have another question, if I may. The homeowner's exemption, so when that takes effect, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, but do you think that the businesses then are going to be taxed more, and then they'll be appealing more, and a lot more of the refunds?
Certainly, what I would say is there, there has been a shift over the past several years from, of the tax burden shift as a whole, from having a greater percentage of the, well, in fact, I just did an analysis of this, that in 2008, the commercial property owners had about 36% of the tax burden, and residential were 64. Currently, it's 70 and 30. So there has been a shift among those types of property classes. With the exemption in place, it would naturally mean that there would be a smaller residential property tax base, and that that would possibly increase more toward the commercial or industrial, those other types of properties. To that point of appeals, it's hard to say.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have a question, maybe a little unfair, but do you have any idea what we used to levy for just debt service? Just debt service pre-2005?
I believe it was, I thought we used to have $5 million plus, but I, you would probably recall better than I, but I think that's what, okay.
$12 million. So that would be like $12 million, like every year, wouldn't it?
In addition.
For debt service alone. And I can't recall, what did you say our debt service levy is this year?
Zero.
Zero. See? If we go back to this slide here with the tax levy increase versus the tax refund losses, just this by itself, just this slide, forget about everything else that we do here, the information here indicates to me systemically unsustainable.
That's correct. Last year, we had a $1 million increase in our levy, and we had a $4 million increase in our refunds. So we lost $3 million last year, even with a levy increase. It is unsustainable.
And do we have a sense of why those property tax refunds continue to grow? I know I asked the question earlier in the week, you know, we had, we had said last, last year that it was sort of an anomaly, and we thought that the assessor's office was just catching up, and do we have any sense at all?
What I would say is that this is, the total property tax refund losses are not all necessarily PTALs, which are the ones that they were cleaning up. This is a combination of all property tax refunds, and we have seen that what we call the general real estate refunds now exceed the property tax appeals in the, those that go in front of the circuit court. So that is certainly a trend that we've seen over the past year, and we're continuing to see that right now. Some of the larger cases that were settled last year were settled for multiple, and we do not believe that that is something that we, you know, we had expected those to kind of come off, if you will. So we're continuing to watch, but we are certainly starting to see increases on the general real estate refund side of things as well.
Is there an implication by the property tax refunds? Like, for example, when someone wins their refund, what is it that they actually got changed that entitles them to the refund?
They get changed their assessed value of their home, so then they're, am I answering your question there?
Yeah, would it be misrepresenting something to say that if it gets changed, then it was not accurate in the first place? And so then it becomes accurate when it gets changed?
And when it's changed after the fact, we just had a refund, and this was on the PTAL side, but we had one come through this week for $100,000, and it was back to 2010. So that's the other challenge that we have, is that we are going back multiple tax years and losing it on our current year collections.
I must misunderstand something, then. I mean, why aren't we doing it right the first time? What's wrong with our assessment process? Is that something that, who does that here? You or Barb?
Cook County Assessor's Office.
Oh, so it's not our mistake? Okay. Thanks.
On the refunds, I know you guys provided us with a number earlier. In comparison to last year, where does that number look trend-wise? I know we're increasing, but month-to-month, one-year apart.
If we look back at October last year, we are, we are neck and neck, it's on par. We're exactly the same amount as we were last year.
In reviewing the slide on residential property tax bill changes, it specifically identifies homes. Is there any way to provide us with information around other types of dwellings in the community and the property taxes associated with those?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you, in regards to like, are you obviously businesses, are you looking for an average mean of a business in Schaumburg, Palatine, and within our boundaries to find a, like, we did a Schaumburg, a Hoffman, and a Palatine, so from a business standpoint, is that the same type of concept you're looking for? Like, what an average business in Schaumburg is, what an average in Hoffman?
Is multi-unit homes and the property taxes associated with, with those other, when I, when I think of a home, I think of a house, right? And maybe separate houses where an individual owner of that home and, and, you know, someone who's a resident of the community and sending their children to our schools has, has an impact versus someone who may be in a multi-unit home, you know, type dwelling, as well as the businesses, and maybe separating those out and showing us some of those figures.
Okay. I, I'm a little concerned about the multi-dwelling livings, apartments, those kinds of things, because we don't know exactly who lives in those, and it could be students and whatnot. But also, you know, one of the things about living in any town or anything is that we, when we start plucking out who goes to school and who doesn't go to school, or who uses a park district, or who uses a library, I think it gets a little muddy. The businesses, I don't know if that makes sense to others, because the businesses work differently, but the, the separate little units of each type of home, I don't know if I see a large value in that.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering what the, the revenue to the school district is from a, I guess it would be considered a business, a multi, like an apartment complex, and the taxes that we're being able to assess from those types of structures.
Sure. So just breaking it down simply into two categories, residential versus commercial, what Lauren just described is there's been a shift that has moved more toward 70% to the residential, whereas it had been in the mid-'60s. And that has happened over a span of years. That happened directly through the Cook County offices, in which the percentages that were attributable to commercial versus residential moved. And it was a deliberate move, and those percentages have borne the path that was set, you know, by the Cook County officials. The burden has moved to the residential owners. If, if there's something more detailed than the 70/30 that we can get for you, you know, I think I would also have a question. We're not sure what level of differentiation would be helpful beyond that.
Is, is an apartment complex considered a business? Is one question I have.
It would be considered a residential property. They are assessed differently. It certainly, we, if it's a condo-type building, it is possible that it is assessed as one standalone property or have one PIN assigned to it. But it's also common that each individual unit has a, an individual PIN and tax bill as well. Those types of properties would be assessed the same as an individual home.
The reason I'm asking is the $50 average would not necessarily hit somebody who's living in an apartment, but it would, you know, would that not then hit the owner of the complex?
If it was one PIN, it would impact the owner of the complex. They would be the one that's responsible for that, and how they disseminate that, I'm not certain, but you would need to know the value of the building, how many units are in the, there would be a lot of additional investigation, you know, that would come into that calculation.
And then they have the ability to perhaps funnel that into the rent or whatever those people are paying and pass that along to the residents there as a result.
That is correct, and those appeals, also, we see those appeals frequently as well, even from the multi-unit dwellings.
Doesn't the TIF districts also affect the business parts, too? I mean, when their, their property taxes are frozen for 15, 20 years, that kind of throws the business, commercial part out of whack, because not all businesses are taxed the same way, then.
Yes, their EAV is frozen for typically a period of 23 years.
I couldn't remember.
But it doesn't just impact the other businesses, it impacts all other taxpayers. It gets distributed through everyone.
I'm just saying it's difficult to kind of put a number down for businesses when each, you've got areas that are being taxed differently than other areas.
Yes.
Do, do, does the district have a percentage of the EAV increase for TIFs against the rest of the district?
Can you, a percentage of the EAV that's within a TIF, is that your question?
Well, we, we have a differential from last year of the EAV, right?
You want the inaccessible EAV?
Well, the differential of that growth within the TIF district, what that percentage would be relative to the rest.
The excess above where it's frozen at, you mean?
No, no, just year to year, because then the 2.4 increase we're applying on the EAV is, is based on the differential, not necessarily, well, you could do it from the baseline, yeah, that would work out. Because then we would know what percentage was being redistributed out. And then that $50 increase that we're averaging on the residential then could be factored by a differential percentage.
We can certainly look into it. I don't have those figures offhand, but can certainly check into that.
And then I had another question. With regard to the IRMF fund payments, is that just an indefinite projection, or are we looking at a, a date of termination or a date where we caught up?
We had talked about, I believe our recommendation on the IMRF additional payments got us to a funding level of about 90%, and we had talked about that through the duration of our strategic plan and can certainly reassess at any point, but that has been our, our plan that we have been working from.
Thank you.
But if we don't continue that plan and there remains an unfunded piece, we will be operating less efficiently than we otherwise could if the unfunded piece was zero, and there would be then no expense to carry that unfunded liability. So we could eliminate that total.
Well, the liability was what, 20 million? And then we were looking at paying that down, and do we stop at 5 million, 4 million, or do we continue to fund beyond once we have no liability?
I agree with that question, yes.
That's my question.
Yes, and what we had planned was within the course of this five-year plan that we had, you know, designated about each year, and that's what we had, you know, planned on fulfilling.
I would encourage you to ask yourself that same question every year, that you have interest expense related to the unfunded liability, because you can eliminate it, and that makes us leaner and meaner.
And that is exactly the path that we have been on, exactly that path. And it is an integrated path by which we now have only operating expenses. So whatever we're going to do, we have trimmed and tightened such that we are running streamlined within the incremental amount that is allowable for the, the increase. And otherwise, we are going to work within those means to stay within that parameter. We tried to show in the one particular slide was, let's say we tweaked it, you know, halfway down, what happens? Once the red line goes below the minimum fund balance, you will find yourself in a swirl of difficulty trying to get, to build back up. And the, the efficiencies that we have identified have run a very lean system. But once we go below the red line, we then set a course that is very difficult to, to get out of. we then set a course that is very difficult to get out of. In our last three years, we have demonstrated investments in the IMRF, use of reserve funds, no further bonded indebtedness, operating within our means, planning, describing the projects that are upcoming toward a three-year average of a, what I consider to be a very moderate, minuscule rate of 1%. If we tweak one component of that overall plan, we see how quickly those numbers, because we have shifted everything to the streamlined operations. That debt service levy is not capped. And it is that mechanism that has unseen and unexperienced impact on the levy in recent years, because we have, this board has worked so hard to diminish and, quite frankly, avoid any of those debt payments. Not avoid them, pay them through reserves.
So, back to Bob's point, the IRMF funds, we're making the 2 million projected out over time, and then we have the 19.2 that's basically unassigned. The question is, does front-ending those payments free while reducing the interest service that we're paying to IRMF?
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry.
We, Mr. Dombrowski, could you repeat that question?
Looking at the slide where we have 19.2 million that's unassigned and available for strategic initiatives and contingencies inclusive of the IRMF special payment, back to Mr. Lefever's point, if we front-end, let's say we go from 4 million, does that free up money down the road while those payments were making to IRMF by reducing liabilities?
We can.
Possibly.
Yeah, we can certainly have that conversation.
And then back to Chair, are we assuming that 2 million is the direction that you want to take regardless of the question?
I think, you know, that's something that we can review on a year-to-year basis.
Just to keep the perspective, remember, 12 years ago, we would consider this, and we would levy $12 million more. And that number now is zero today.
Yeah, the other thing that is important to remember about that scale is that our operating budget was less then than it is now, although that amount of 12 million was actually more a greater percentage of the budget then.
And the difference is systemic, systemically is how we are operating now. It is all operating. Non-systemic would be the debt service, the capital projects, and the life safety, all of which now are zero. So, the system needs to work. If you miss now, you will be off so far tomorrow, it is unbelievable. You will be off so far, so fast, it will be the picture that you had in 2005.
That is said much.
Put up any graph about this district from 2005 or before.
Succinctly then.
Any picture.
It is a very integrated plan. It's got multiple moving pieces, and we have worked very hard to help get us onto this efficient course that we're on. A tweak will change the entire plan.
Unfortunately, none of which we have just talked about had anything to do with the fact that we have sustained the quality of education through all of it. But at the time, pre-referendum, the conversation was about Dr. Small. I can't even remember if he were principal at Framed High School then, but we were talking about cutting roughly $18 million of stuff from a variety of different places. If something didn't change mathematically.
I have one more question, if I may. So, looking at this CPI assumption then for 2018 is 1.7%, and that's what we would be looking, and that was part of the five-year fund projection.
It's actually a 1.5% increase in CPI plus 0.2% in new property growth.
Okay. So, that's kind of our thought of following the CPI, and that lays it out here on our five-year fund balance. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, what are we doing for the Budget and Finance Meeting? What's coming back to us at that point?
So, what we had described, I think it was a week ago Wednesday, so let me clarify the dates on this as well. At the time, we thought we had another unavoidable, you know, reason to miss November 1st. November 1st has opened up, and so the next tentative date we could meet for the Budget and Finance Committee meeting would be on November 1st. We will bring back information, and that's what we had talked about at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, was if this board would like to have additional information, either for yourselves or for the Budget and Finance Committee to consider it, we would be glad to do that. I would, I want to make sure that people recognize it is November 1 and not November 8. And then we will take, you know, guidance here tonight in terms of what would be most helpful.
So, I heard a request from Mrs. Klimkowitz for some other scenarios.
I heard 2.0% and 1.75.
Okay. I would support that request, I would share that request.
And then additionally, I know there are other questions. Do we have any, do you have a list of those to ensure that it's what people are looking to come back? Mr. Dombrowski had a question. Mr. Rosenblum had a question. I just want to make sure we have them all, so that.
We do have those?
Are those things that we are, we're interested in hearing the answers to as a board? Okay, yes. Anything additional? All right, thank you so much. All right, this brings us to our consent agenda. There's a suggested motion that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke? Aye. This brings us to our special reports. The first provided was the Freedom of Information Act request for your review. Any questions? We also have our 2017 summer school enrollment cost analysis. This is also for your information. Do we have any questions there? We have our post-high school planning nights. Is there any information, information, is there any questions? I just want to say that I attended, as a parent, college night, and I thought it was out of, I think I only went to two and a half. And I thought it was very well done and one of, one of really good nights of information. So, it's not easy to put a night like that on, and I know Mr. Rosenblum was there in official capacity. So, thank you for attending. We also have our 2017, 2018 free and reduced meal eligibility. This was also for information. Any questions? I did have one question, not in regards to, per se, the meal pricing itself and eligibility, more towards the eligibility, and what other services when somebody is eligible for that. If you could just let Dr. Kates or Dr. Smalls tell us, you know, what other services when a family signs up for a free and reduced? That'd be great.
Sure, so the board has a policy that refers to those other fees that are waived. It does start with the registration. It does include both, you know, the regular school year, the summer school. It is also inclusive of other fees that would come up throughout the course of the school year. Drivers Ed is often associated with that. We have some graduation materials that go along with that. Our AP testing goes along with that. Are there items that I'm?
I think that's very complete description. The testing cost was one that I was going to point out if you hadn't brought that up.
Yeah. So, it is designed to make sure that, you know, the students of economic difficulty are able to access, experience as similar to other students that might be preventative.
Thank you. We also have our District 211 professional development opportunities. Any questions or comments? Our Community Connections Newsletter Strategic Plan update. Questions or comments? This brings us to our unfinished business. The first item is our 60-plus acre property optimizing of land use. This topic was last discussed by the board in July. It is open for discussion tonight.
I'm happy to tee up a motion. So, I move that the superintendent and his designees be authorized and directed to take all necessary steps to begin preparing for the sale of the district's 62 acres of land north of Wise Road between Plum Grove Road and Summit Drive in Schaumburg, including all recent appraisals of the property, ordering new appraisals if necessary, verifying the condition, ordering a new title commitment, obtaining a survey if necessary, and drafting the necessary board documents and notices.
Second.
Okay, it's open for discussion. We have a first and a second on a motion, on the motion. Would anybody like to open up discussion?
Well, I guess I do have some thoughts, some questions in regards to it. I guess I would have liked to have seen us using that property in some way, you know, really for the students. If that's the direction we go with selling the property, I guess my question becomes, and I know this is probably down the road, but I just wonder, will Conan High School then be able to accommodate a number of students? I mean, I have no idea how many houses would be built and what that would be. But that was the thought that I had in regards to it. And if Conan can't handle everything, you know, would it be with Schaumburg? And would we have to do boundary changes? But that could be down the road, I understand that. I guess that's just, you know, some thoughts that I have. And also, along with the sale of this property, I guess I would like to see what, if there's any portion that we may want to, you know, keep? Or would our teachers have any agricultural or horticultural types of things with it to just kind of keep the environment a little bit more open? So, we don't end up, you know, it being very dense. And I'm not sure, you know, who's going to be interested in this and so on. And I guess another thought that I have is, if we sell the property, how will that money go directly to help the students? Because if the property was meant for the students, I want to see that money going into the kids. That they can actually, whether it's items in their classroom, things like that, something that is going to actually benefit the students. So, those are just some thoughts. And I know some of it's down the road, but those are the thoughts that I have and some of the concerns that I have.
I agree with everything that Mrs. Klimkowitz just said. I think towards the end of your remarks, you answered your first question, but it just wasn't in the same context. You want to use the property for the students. And the whole point of this whole exercise is to optimize the utility. And that is what is going to be the outcome of this. But I believe the information presented has been, we struggle to do that on a non-contiguous parcel of land. That is a challenge. And so, therefore, we come to this, to repatriate that and utilize it some other way. But yes, for the benefit of students, yes.
I would argue that making a most expensive property, I'd say that we spend anywhere from 400 to 600 to 750,000 for our student-led home building program. Buy a house, MO it, build a new house on an existing lot. We're sitting on 62 acres of land that's already zoned residential with the village of Schaumburg, and don't have to incur the cost of buying a property and demolishing an existing residential unit. I don't understand why we haven't explored using our home building program to do exactly what the property's zoned for without having to incur the cost of buying additional parcels, in some cases outside of the district or in, you know, areas like in Elgin, which are much further for the northern portion of our students to come and build homes.
It's a great question, and we are constantly looking for lots that are within the District 211 boundaries. I would also add that the difference, however, of buying a developed lot versus this completely undeveloped land does have attached costs to it. So, those are all factors that contribute to the prospect of how we might use those. I am hopeful that any consideration that would go forward would include, you know, communication and consultation and collaboration, frankly, with people who might access the land if they were to build residential on it, that it would include partnership with us for potentially that use. But it does require, in its current state, an infrastructure development that does have extra costs attached to it that our existing residential lots don't have when we buy them, you know, within the district.
Right, and I don't think we've been presented with any numbers that have determined that that would be cost prohibitive.
We did get initial, what it would take to just even take the trees down. Yeah, without, oh, I'm talking to the microphone. Without even looking at that, I don't have that number off the top of my head. But I do remember, we talked at one point, something about $1 million just to cut trees down, and that didn't even include the thicket. But I like the idea of trying to, down the road, incorporate, if we go this route, of a partnership. I just, because we're still in the business of educating, we're not in the business of real estate. So, it's a large parcel of land to take on ourselves to become a real estate company and a building development company versus houses for a building develop, for our program. That's a two-year program. Even if every school used it, it's still a long haul for that. So, I'm not sure, I would need numbers to go into redeveloping that land to parcel it up, in my opinion.
Well, I'd also add to the fact that, you know, the development of the infrastructure is going to take us two to three years, let alone we're going to have to, you know, work with the MWRD for the waste, you know, the water things. So, in essence, to go that route, we wouldn't be able to use the property, I would say, for four to five years.
There is a great deal of investment in exactly those infrastructure development items that you are describing.
Right.
Along with that, though, even if we sell the property, it might be several years before a developer does anything with it, possibly.
Right, and that's the partnership concept. We would, I imagine, still run the program as we run it today, or better or different, depending on how your curriculum looks. But it still would provide an opportunity down the road to continue our programs. That's how I would look at it.
Just as we would buy a lot anywhere, as we have bought patches of lots, if I can use that phrase, you know, just down the street from Framed, a similar collaboration could occur with whichever company were to, you know, acquire the land.
But we can negotiate that in our contract to give us X number of lots over a period of time.
One would think, yes.
I feel like that, I mean, while there's, while I find a lot of value in the, you know, in the business, I mean, in the building construction, education, and curriculum. I mean, in the building construction, education and curriculum, I feel like that's such a small piece of the big picture. I mean, the big, the point is, we don't need the land to build a school, and so we should optimize that asset and, you know, I feel like we're digging into some minutia.
Well, I'm not, I mean, I think that if we spend 300 to 750,000 per home, and you can put on 62 acres, let's just say you can put 100 homes, you're talking 7.5 million dollars in revenue that you can generate at a cost of a fraction of that in clearing and building new homes and infrastructure. You know, the whole goal of the strategic plan was to find a way to utilize this asset. And if you can first and foremost educate students with that asset, I think that's a paramount opportunity that we're trying to.
I would agree with you, Mr. Dombrowski. However, the part is, the cost to develop this land, the cost of the infrastructure, where are we getting the money for that then? You've got to do that before you can even subdivide the lots and start building.
Well, we did have the survey, and what we got from Manhart was there is existing utilities that we can tie into if we need to put the laterals in and things of that nature. There may be some, there may be some additional work that needs to be done, but I don't believe that the cost of putting the infrastructure in has to be absorbed all at once. And the question then becomes, what is that cost divided by the number of homes that we'll eventually build? Not only that, we can also take some of these parcels and potentially reach out to other high school districts like 214 or Elgin and see if they would like to participate as well and maybe divide some of the cost of the infrastructure versus having to purchase lots and do demo work.
Thank you. I do think all those are valid points. I think we just need to go back to the point of the question of Mr. Hinchall is, number one, do we need, do we need such a large parcel of land to operate our building and construction program? Even if we were to partner with all the other districts in the driving distance, would that be beneficial? Would that be optimizing that land to what it should be? Again, I want to bring us back to, we're in the business of education, and yes, we build houses as a very small portion of our education process. And I don't, I believe something like that would take a lot of time, money and work outside of all the other responsibilities we have to all the students within the district. And there's where lies my concern with the idea of parcelling the land and building our own housing complex.
So I concur with what a lot of people have been saying already, from the need to optimize the land. We've already under, we've already reviewed many different options, and I don't want to say, kind of like it's late in the process to be bringing up additional options and ideas and things like that, but I think they're very, very valid ideas and alternatives. I like what Mrs. Klimkowitz said about maybe utilizing various options and not just a single one. For instance, having a developer develop the land and still give us opportunities to also use it for our educational purposes. So that's definitely having an advantage for the students. Very good point on what do we do with the money and making sure that it is properly utilized and/or invested so that we're able to have a long-term benefit from whatever value we get from the land returning back to the school district to, to your point, to benefit our students. And so optimizing the land, having alternatives so that our school district can take advantage of whatever choice is made, and making sure that we're being very fiscally responsible with whatever money we get from that.
Thank you. Any more? Go ahead, Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Just a question. One of the other options that we were kind of looking at was if there was another entity, another taxing entity that was interested in the property. How does that fall in to our discussion? Is there anyone that's interested in, that would have to pay us market value because we don't want to, you know, lose the funds for our students here?
Sure. So throughout the course of the, you know, just under a year that we've been revisiting this, the communications that we've had with other public entities have been frequent. And I would, as a part of the motion that was made, ensure that we had clear definitive position from each of those entities in terms of what would be their possible interest. And I believe that that may happen.
Okay. But we would definitely ask for market value. So is that kind of the thought that we would, we would look at to make certain that we got the best value for the property?
Yeah, so there is two divergent paths by which you can sell to a public entity differentiated from the way that you could sell it to a non-public entity. And that would be the board's discretion in terms of where they would set the values and the salable price. But the process can proceed differently for a public entity than it has to proceed for a non-public entity. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And so the motion that's on the floor, does that allow for either the public sale or a sale to a taxing body?
Yes.
Okay.
It allows for, pretty much to find out anybody and everybody who's interested in this land. That's what the motion, how the motion reads. Any other questions, comments? I guess, I feel like before I could call a vote on this, I do have to ask one, the question I've asked it before. Does District 211 have any need for that land for educational use?
We do not see presently or any imminent need in the future use or need for that land.
Thank you. Okay. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Hinchall?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
What is our next step on this?
So our contact with the local public entities and then to begin to advertise, begin an advertising sequence by which we would make announcement that we would be sending this to either auction or to bid. The board would have to take action in terms of which course to follow. There would be resolutions by which we would declare those methods, and a lot of communication with people between here and there. Clearly, people will be interested and are interested in tonight's proceedings to know how that could proceed. We've had inquiries throughout the course of, you know, the last several months, many of them, for people interested to know. So we will, you know, begin working on a advertising sequence and announcement sequence so that then this board can decide which of the methods they would pursue to proceed with the sale by regulation.
And, you know, not having ever done anything like this before, we'll have some input into maybe some open space or whatever negotiation, as we talked about earlier, and then whatever the village guidelines are as far as open space, you know, keeping things environmentally friendly.
Each of those items can be set and determined from this point forward.
Okay.
They, of course, relate and have an impact on, then the more conditions typically that a person puts on any property, then it impacts the value.
But we'll talk about that because then developers, usually there's some things that they have to offer as far as open space or whatever it might be. I'm not certain what some of the guidelines are, but we'll be able to talk about those and kind of keep up to date with it.
You will have any information you seek, but yes, we would leave that to the board's discretion and articulation in terms of what is it exactly that the board would like to see happen subsequent and along with these value assessments, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is proposed policy revision. Participation in athletics or extracurricular activities. The suggested motion is that the board policy file IGDB participation in athletics or extracurricular activities be revised as proposed and included in the board policy manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have now our Illinois Association of School Board Resolutions 2017. We have five proposed new resolutions before us that will be voted upon at the III Conference in November. Is there further discussion on these resolutions? Does anyone have any questions on the ones that were given to us last month and how they were presented in our board packet? And do our delegates understand what the board wants? Thank you. And thank you for being at the conference and doing that on our behalf. We appreciate it. Okay, this brings us to our new business. We have our school calendar for 2019, 2020. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the school calendar for the 2019 and 2020 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Sorry about that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have our summer school calendar for 2019 and 2020. There's two motions. The first motion is that the Board of Education approves the modified summer school calendar for the summer of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The second suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves the summer school calendar for the summer of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please? Oh, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You are also given alternative fuel school bus information. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that? Okay, there's none. We also had a request for a foreign exchange trip. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approves participation in six foreign exchange trips as proposed for the summer of 2018. District 211 reserves the right to cancel any travel that the district deems unsafe or to not be in the best interest of District 211.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. This brings us to our potential topics for future discussion.
I have a question, please, before we move on.
Of course.
So on all these items here in seven, Pete, are you still there?
Yeah, I am.
I didn't hear you vote. Did you vote on any of these?
Yeah, I had no objection. I'm in complete agreement. I'd vote nay if I didn't.
Did you vote on 7A, 7B and 7D?
I did. The B is summer school, alternative buses and foreign exchange trips, yes.
We're all clear? You did vote on those then?
Yes, we had all seven on all of them. We had no nays. You just didn't hear it come out of the box?
It did not come out of the box.
Oh, it did not come out of the box.
Okay, I'm good. Pete voted yes on all of those.
Okay. So noted in the minutes that Mr. Dombrowski voted yes to all of the points in question by Mr. LaFever. Does that work? Thank you. Thank you for keeping us on our toes down there. Okay, that brings us to our committee reports. We will begin with NSSO and Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Okay. As far as NSSO, they had a program tour yesterday, so I was able to go on that. We went to Minor School and Timber Ridge, and we got to be with the kids and do some classroom activities. If anyone would like to do a tour of Minor, Timber Ridge or Kirk, you know, please contact Dr. Hackett and she would gladly take you over there. And it's just a wonderful opportunity to see the, see the school, to interact with the students there, and just what a wonderful environment they have. Minor's the therapeutic, or excuse me, Timber Ridge is the therapeutic day school, and Minor has, you know, some of our students there also. So that was wonderful. Don't forget, we've got the magic show coming up, which is going to be Sunday, the 22nd. Doors open at noon. The show starts at 1:00. It's at Minor School. And they did the six-day enrollment at Kirk School. We've got 176 students after the six-day enrollment. Minor has 89. Originally, we were projecting 80, but it's at 89. Timber Ridge is up to 86. And then there's a number of students for the deaf and hard of hearing. One of the important things to kind of keep in mind is NSSO is doing a lot for parent education and their networking services, so they've got a number of opportunities for parents to meet and to share information. Autism Parenting Group, Transition Parenting, just connecting to the community, Parent Behavior Training Series, having the parents feel more part of the school, which is truly important that they've been working on. And going along with that is the New Parent Education Resource Center. They're calling it PERC, which is the little building that's over at Kirk School, right by the entrance. So they're going to do an open house on November 1st from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and then they were going to do the board meeting right after that. So that's a great opportunity for parents to be part of it. The IDEA Part B flow-through grants have been generated, and about $10 million goes towards NSSO and the program and the districts for various programs. And I don't recall exactly how much we get, but there's a lot of education and programs and workshops for staff at all of our member districts. And the last is the Shining Star, which is, you know, the version of recognizing the students in that. And one of the young people that came before us was a young man by the name of Chris Evans. And he was a former student at Minor and our high school District 211 student. He was at Minor, and then he transitioned to New Endeavors. He spoke, and he spoke very eloquently, and how passionate he was about it and how supportive the staff at Minor and our staff at New Endeavors at the Higgins Education Center were, and what a wonderful facility it was. And this young man has been working on, you know, holding a job and being able to stay there a little bit longer, putting in more hours. So it's been absolutely tremendous. And he does have a job with Northwest, Northwest Community Hospital. So he's doing a great job over there. He's working up to 25 hours per week now, and he's just very excited and very grateful for all of the opportunities that he had. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski, would you like to speak on Ed Red?
Yeah, the Ed Red kickoff luncheon had a presentation, October 6th, covered all of the associated points with the, with the new Senate Bill 1947 that was signed into law for state funding of education. It covered the evidence-based funding, covered the tax credit scholarships from a national perspective, and then we had the legislative perspective on the funding model, and then we also had the legal perspective regarding what a referendum for a district that's over the 110% funding level for adequacy. And that basically covered most of what the information presented at the luncheon was, and the next meeting will be November 3rd.
Thank you. Dr. Cates, did you want to add?
That was spot on.
Thank you. And then this brings us to partners of your, for our community. I was not able to attend this month's meeting. Mrs. Klimkowitz, were you there?
I wasn't able to.
So we're going to have to throw it to Mr. Kovak. I do know that they are having a trunk and treat on Tuesday. And Mrs. Klimkowitz and I will be there for that and support him, so, but the rest is a, would be helpful.
That's accurate. The trunk or treat this year is Tuesday from 4:30 to 6:30. So it's an event that seems to grow each year, and people And people look forward to, a lot of smiling faces from the youngsters who take part. At the most recent meeting, it was an opportunity to follow up on what I shared with you at our last session here, that we were describing the program starting up for the new school year. Well, it is now in full force. And I have the calendar for this week and next week in front of me, which clearly details there is not a day of the week that that building is not being utilized during the evening for this program. Whether it is for the physical fitness programs that Park Districts and others are partnering on, the adult ESL courses, art programs for children, or special events like the trunk or treat. It is in constant use and filled spaces, which I think speaks to the dedication of the people that are partnering to be a part of this. The meeting room that we use for our monthly advisory sessions has become overcrowded with new faces and agencies being represented that we really are considering locating to a different space within Hoffman State's High School in order to accommodate the size of the partnership.
To that end, it really speaks to the vision and fortitude of this board to provide that space. That group had tried to get together for a number of years, and it was this board that made the Higgins Education Center happen and that partnership happen, and what I'm going to call synergy that is happening with more partners joining the table each time. It is a growing asset that Mr. Kovak just described, it continues to expand. I want to do one little highlight. One of the trunk or treat additions this year is what we have a haunted bus this year, so we are, we are.
It is growing.
One more example.
I was asked by a community member, do we utilize that facility and that organization for LCAP within our district?
Talking about the service hours for seniors?
Yes, for, yes, service hours for seniors.
Yes, we actually utilize it for that program as well as National Honor Society students who are looking for service hours.
Thank you. We have our budget and finance committee report. Is there anything additional?
Nothing additional. You saw it.
Just making sure. And that brings us, there's plenty of announcements for you guys to review. And that'll bring us to entering closed session. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, matter relating to an individual student, setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Okay, suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session?
So moved.
So moved.
I'm going to, thank you. Okay, our first item is...
Okay, wait, let me take the roll call.
Sorry, I should have asked for it.
Mr. Dombrowski? Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
The first item is staff discipline and support staff. The suggested motion is that the employee Nancy Casmer be suspended for three days without pay. Further, that the board secretary notify said employee in writing of this action of the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Hinchaw?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski? Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting comments? Okay, hearing done, this meeting is adjourned.